All right, welcome everybody to the April twenty second two thousand twenty four meeting of town council. Uh it's called order at seven thirty if we can all rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. A couple announcements to start ourselves out uh the town council has once again been recognized as a banner community. By the Allegheny League of municipalities, the banner community program now in its twelfth year. Recognizes municipalities that focus their operations on professional development. Prudent fiscal management transparency accountability and proactive communications. Uh we're glad to be able to be a part of that. Great um recognition. Uh second item was leap vault for residents is at the parking lot over here uh between the McCandless Northern Allegheny Heritage and Cultural Center. And the Lorraine G Roger soccer fields um it will cease to be available April twenty eighth. If you haven't got it by all means go over and get some today. Uh there are some additional announcements from members here in council. I know Nick, yes, you have one by all means go ahead.
Like just add two quick uh things on Saturday. There were two wonderful events held. Uh one was by Northland Public Live Library. That was the Gordon Gala um was a great success. They had a massive turnout and. They raised some good money for wonderful cause so just wanted to give them a special thanks for all the wonderful work that. They do. They're an incredible asset to us. And then secondly, also on Saturday, the environmental advisory committee held their uh roadside. Cleanup and they had about a hundred people show up and we spent the day picking up trash so making our town look. And feel like an even better place to live. And I have a quick note from them that I would like to read on their behalf. On Saturday, April twentieth, the environmental advisory committee conducted their spring semi annual roadside cleanup for approximately eighty. Participants including all council members and all but one EAC member. In addition, Scout Pack two seventy nine conducted the cleanup of Potter Park on April twenty first, bringing the total participants to approximately one hundred. Participants were aided by five police details and Department of Public Works staff. The EAC is pleased to announce that there was a complete success as there were no safety issues and approximately three hundred bags of litter were collected. The EAC is grateful for the cooperation and support of the McCandless Police, the Department of Public Works Staff. And McCandless Town Council. The EAC would also like to thank councilmen wall for supplying a continental breakfast that contributed to the strong sense of community spirit. That was felt by many participants. So thank you all. It was a great event and a great day to be a resident McCandless.
Thanks for having me. Are there any other announcements from any other councilman? Uh pending no more announcements, uh this brings us to our time for public comment on agenda items only. If you do have public comment, please come to the front. State your name and address. No public comment. Uh then at this time we will move on to a public hearing. Steve, I'll turn it over to you.
President Singer, uh at this time I will call to order the public hearing on a conditional use application bought by Brown's Towing. Seeking approval for a tow lot and vehicle staging and storage uh area. Uh it's the warehouse distribution use category in the MC district. And this use is proposed at uh eighty nine sixty Perry Highway uh one five two three seven. So I think there's a representative from the towing company. You could come forward uh. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Joseph Brown.
You want mine? Brown's towing.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. Um so sorry, it's a hearing. So what what we're going to do is I'm going to ask you to swear in. Um and then any other member of the public that is here that wishes to have party status or to make public comment should also stand and raise their right hand. So with that. Or anybody who wants to speak, go ahead and stand up. If not, Mr. Brown, and raise your right hand. Do you swear? Tell the truth, all the truth, nothing but the truth. So help you God.
Yes, I do.
Okay. Um the floor is yours to to tell council about your uh what you're proposing.
I own Brown's towing. I opened it in two thousand. I moved to a lot of areas uh we got the offer. I got the offer to move down towards McCandless area and we took the offer. Uh we have. Plenty of guys, we cover quite a bit of McCandless and then we cover other areas beyond McCandless out of the McCandless area. We do twenty four hour towing. We have guys that work shifts twenty four hours a day. We tow broke down cars. Deliver gas, lockouts, jump starts. I mean, that's what we do. Uh pick up wrecks. We collect a lot of it. I mean, I've been in business. I started in two thousands. I went incorporated in two thousand eleven. We have just under a hundred employees. And we have ninety trucks.
It's all told, not just.
Yeah, that's all though. Yeah, that's that's all over. No, it's all over. For here for making this area here, we run around thirty five hundred calls a month. Is what they run here.
That including triple A?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we do triple A. We have State Farm. We have Erie. Uh we have Toyota. We have Chevy. And then Enterprise. We do a lot of enterprise.
Uh I see in our packets, you know, um and I follow this a little bit as you went through the other question, anything else. Um you know, it's it has been provided us some landscape plans, some parking categories. Um are there any concerns for you and your business being able to follow these parking issues or any?
No, the the planning there were there. He's concerned with that. As for getting it done in a timely manner. He says he's only got a few more weeks and he's already almost booked. So he said it's probably going to be fall.
Yep.
Before he gets that done, but as for parking, nah, we we won't run out. I mean. Uh it won't get no bigger where they're at right now. I mean, we go all the way up to terrarium. And if we go further up, then the one that will end up opening another yard up there to to come down to it. Um but yeah, for the planning and stuff, I mean, he's good. He kept. He has the pencil in hoping that we get everything done. And he's hoping he can get it in before the weather breaks too much. Like you said, once it gets warm, warm.
Sure.
We can't plan. We said they'll just die.
Understood. Um and just to follow up to just as a refresh, there were no complaints from surrounding properties or neighbors or nothing. I just wanted to clarify. That's my only question, sir.
Other other comments or questions from uh?
Mr. Brown, I'm looking here at a rendition of your landscaping. And it looks a lot like a long hill view. It says cement walk. Are you gonna put a walkway on the hill?
Cement walk? That's where the your parking lady parks.
That's where the crossing guard.
The crossing guard parks there. That's already there.
Okay.
Like that part, that's where she parked her car. It's right there on the corner.
Because we've been working really hard in the town to try to build sidewalks, realize it's very expensive on state roads. I wouldn't ask you to put one on on the state road right there because it's all asphalt in the front, I believe. But if if you would consider. Uh putting a sidewalk along Hillview.
I don't own the property.
Oh, okay.
As for it, and that's a big ditch.
Oh, is it?
That ditches.
Never mind.
Yeah, there is. Okay, there is a sidewalk on the other side of the street that lines up the crosswalk. Yeah, so it is sidewalk from nineteen to the school. Okay, it aligns with the crosswalk and no, no problems.
Yeah, that ditch is like probably six to seven feet deep. It's pretty deep ditch. It is.
Yeah.
It's a drainage.
Thank you. Good luck with your business.
And there already looks like there's preexisting sidewalk on that side still as well.
Yeah, having attended the playing of the meetings, um you know, they uh. Scrutinized this pretty thoroughly, right? And um I think Mr. Brown had made a lot of accommodations to put in some. Landscaping.
Yes.
Spend some money on on that and. It's always been a gas station, you know, I don't. That type of car lot, yeah, car lot. And having driven by there several times, you know, um. It's not a real busy place.
No, usually what it is is once they come there, they leave. And they don't come back until towards the end of their shift. Because I mean, once they're like.
It's just kind of command central kind of.
Right, once they're in Chesapeake, Terrarium. Uh Lunsaw, once they get to them areas, they usually don't leave. They pretty much stay there till about the end of their shift and then after that, then they come back, park the truck and you go on and the next guys come in.
And just to be clear, I read this too, but all of them go on Paul Ricard. You don't inbound cars there.
No.
You take them to.
We take them to another. What it is, we'll bring them in there and they usually leave. If it's during the day, they're usually gone the next day. Uh if it's a Friday afternoon, they might be gone Monday morning, but for the most part they leave. Because we we all know what city from there.
Okay.
And if it's an actual full wreck, then we, what it is, the insurance companies, they don't they don't pay. They don't like to pay storage. So then we try to get them always to take them to a body shop. Because then we get paid for it. They get their car. We ain't got to argue with it. If we have to store one, like we'll get an impound. Like a DUIs, they're they're an impound car. And then we take them to a lot that's secured. Like we have one in Greenville. We got one in Washington and then we can take them to Elwood City. And we'll take a little secured lot because then it's like our areas all on the cameras, but it's not fenced. And if you have an impound, you you want it fenced. I mean, that's. I mean, anytime we ever like they had us. Get one off seventy nine. We hold it straight to Greenville because we have a building for impounds. That's completely under cameras because they put talked about put uh tape on them all. So ask me on the camera the whole time. This way they come when they search it, they know it's never touched. But we have three buildings up there that is specifically for. Pulling cars into.
But it's okay. Um planning commission did recommend this for approval, is there?
Yeah, they had they had.
Some conditions.
Yes, yeah, I mean, do you want me to do this now or when they might report like I can?
I think you should do now on the record. I think that would be more helpful.
Do you want me to come up or?
I mean, we should make sure it gets.
Yeah, probably to get up to the microphone.
Brian, you can have.
Yep.
Thanks, Mr. Brown.
So. Yes, we did have two meetings of the planning commission, which we discussed this pretty extensively. Um a lot of the focus was on the landscaping, which is what the landscaping plan that Mr. Brown submitted came out of. Um so the planning commission did recommend approval for this. The conditions that they suggested were no wrecked vehicles to be parked in the lot for longer than twenty four hours, except over the weekend. Reason being, they were, you know, just kind of concerned about the aesthetics in general, but um based on what Mr. Brown had shared with us at that last meeting. Because they have to work with the insurance companies to figure out, you know, where the car is supposed to go. And a lot of those agencies are closed over the weekend. It would be difficult for them to, you know, um run on the weekends without. Being able to at least leave the cars there until Monday. So the planning commission thought that 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 made sense and Mr. Brown was okay um with that condition. Um the second one was addition of landscaping is shown on the submitted plan and that's what you all saw earlier. Um plus extending the Hillview side plantings towards the east as much as possible. So that would be, you know, going up towards the school district. Um they were just hoping if it was possible to completely really screen in, you know, um where briefly we had that parking plan up on the screen. That's where they're parking some of the vehicles in the back. They would like that to be screened as much as possible. Um and then the third being to follow the parking plan as shown, which that was a much more in-depth discussion that we got, you know, into with that group as to where the wrecked vehicles would be stored, you know, um. The run trucks, things like that, flatbreds. Um so we have that on file as well. Um also just wanted to know that Mr. Brown was able to work with us to make sure that all of the plantings were native plantings because that's something that we actually require now. Um in the new development code before it was just recommendation from the EAC, but we actually have that native planting list um is an official requirement. So we checked that over, made sure. They're all compliant species with with that list.
Questions for RJ?
Yeah, RJ, you might want to supplement that over the weekend to weekend and holidays.
Oh, sure. I mean, that's up to however you all would want to vote when the time is to vote, but we could. We could certainly add that um to the recommendation. Yeah.
There are questions for. Mr. Brown, do you have anything for this? Are are you okay with the conditions as?
Yeah, I have no problem.
Okay.
I mean, because like I said, most cars leave within twenty four. If we get them today, we know we the insurance company calls us. There's time to call us at ten o'clock and eight o'clock. But by the next morning, by noon, we know where their cars are. Because what it is, they they don't pay. And we understand where they come from. I mean, we have same day pickups for insurance companies. And it's reason being we pick up over a hundred fifty cars for insurance companies. And you figure if we didn't get a hundred fifty cars, that's an extra sixty five, seventy five dollars a day for them for every car. At at the end, it adds up to a lot. So I mean, they call us the next morning and they know where their car wants to go. Like they really do.
Um, okay, any uh members of the public? I know nobody was sworn in. I could swear you in now if there's any questions or comments at this point. Seeing them. RJ, this is slated for voting.
I have to double check the answer. I imagine that we proceed to the end of the day.
Okay, then the second meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then we will uh take it under advisement until then. And that uh that will end the hearing unless there's any objections from council. Okay, the hearing is over and we can move on.
Okay, um item number six, uh the previous meeting minutes from April eighth were submitted. Um hopefully everyone had a chance to review. Is there a motion out there?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes.
What motion's been made? Is there a second?
Full second.
Okay, second by Mr. Giorgetti. Is there any discussion or any change? Uh all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Uh we're turning into reports of committees. At this time, I will turn over the meeting to Mr. Casey for Administration Finance Committee.
Trish, would you like to come up? Give us your report.
Yeah, I'll receive the checklist thing. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to address them at this time.
It seemed like there were more real estate refunds than typical. What is the reason for that?
So the last two months, we have had the refunds related to the appeals related to the common level ratio. And dropped it from the eighty one percent to the sixty four. Um in total, we have reimbursed or refunded uh about twenty nine thousand dollars. Um I do not expect that number to go more than fifty at this time. Um we do have a couple commercial ones outstanding that may bring that up, but I believe that our budget will absorb that. Okay. Um as a heads up, we will be um anticipating seeing these same appeals next year when they lower it again. So um our percentage should be smaller than the school district is experiencing, but um. We are tracking that and I'll continue to update you as it goes along, but we are at about twenty nine thousand dollars. Any other questions on the checklist?
Like to make a motion to approve checklist the number three dated March first twenty twenty four to March thirty first twenty twenty four totaling. One million eight hundred and forty one thousand five hundred and thirty three dollars and eighty cents. As submitted to each member of council and posted on the bulletin board and town website.
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, if you could kindly review the dashboard summary.
So this month's dashboard to council included not only the general fund, but also the quarter to date for capital improvements program fund. I have that up on the screen. Um the general fund is consistent with prior year. We're running um as expected. If anyone has any questions about revenues or expenditures for the general fund, I'm happy to address those. Um additionally, we did the first quarter for capital improvements. Um. I want to run through. This is the second largest budget. Um that we have in our funds. So behind the nineteen million that we have budgeted for general fund, we have this seven million budgeted for capital improvements. The funding sources for capital um predominantly are the general fund, but there are a considerable number of grants this year. Um you'll see the Arley Grant and the Greenlight Go. Those pertain to the traffic signal upgrades that we have going. Those are multi-year projects. We expect to see Arley completed this year. And we expect the Greenlight Go to proceed into next year as well. So what you see in the revenue source is only half of the Greenlight Go. Um funding that we will receive. In addition, we did not complete some of the HVAC work that we anticipated by December of last year. And so we had some of the LSA or local share account money um budgeted in twenty three. That money will be moved to twenty four. That one percent will increase. And you'll see that in the budget amendment in July. So it'll be a funding source to bring some of that funding forward and allow us to continue to make improvements to this building. Um when you go down below. As I mentioned, you can see the starred items are one that I anticipate us having budget amendments for just because of timing with twenty twenty three's budget. Um the twenty twenty four budget is in the. Left column. Actual expenditures are the next column. Those are bills we have physically paid year to date. The total um the twenty twenty four additional encumbrances are purchase orders or contracts that we have signed to date. If you come down here to the maintenance on roads and repairs. You'll see that million two contract that y'all approved last meeting to give you an idea of how items get into that column. As well as purchase orders that we have outstanding for equipment here in the public works section. So the total commitment. Or total committed that we have in that fourth column is the sum of your expenditures plus your encumbrances. And then there's a utilized to date and you can see going to the bottom. That we have utilized fifty four percent of the budget for CIP to date. First three quarters of the month, sorry, the first three months of the year for the first quarter is a good start. Um so we are, as we move into nicer weather and the ability to proceed into other projects. Um you'll see that number climb. Um we've broken it out based on projects. We've broken it out based on funding levels. If anyone has any questions related to general fund or CIP, I'm happy to answer them now, or you are welcome to call me at a later time.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Um also in this month's report for council, you had the final copy of the DCED. Which is the Department of. Community and Economic Development for the state of Pennsylvania. Thank you. And they have a format, a regulatory format that they like to see all governments um report in. It's consistent across the state. Um our auditors prepare that report for us. They've done so by the deadline. Um they issued a report on that. It is an adverse opinion because it is the state regulatory basis and not gap. And so um you'll see some additional wording there, but it is consistent among other municipalities. Um everything. Appears to be um moving along with the year end audit. And the results were in the paper last Thursday. So if anyone has any questions on that, I'm also available after the meeting.
Thank you and your staff for getting that done in a timely manner.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Next communications report, Mr. O'Malley.
Communications report was uh in your packet. If you have any questions, let me know.
Yeah, how many hits did we get for the dog? And what happened with the dog?
Uh the 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 dog um is last I know was at the West Deer Dog Shelter.
Okay.
Um it needed some surgery and and things like related to health concerns for it. Um I don't know if there's been an update since I last saw, which is probably about a week ago. Um but obviously that is uh was was a post that got a lot of. Impressions. I think it was about two hundred and thirty one thousand.
Nobody knows who the other was.
And no, that has not been as far as I know, but that could be uh an ongoing investigation that. Uh I don't know the details of.
Great, thank you. Next, uh junior councilman's report. Council members report.
Uh good evening. Um we'll start with our announcement for the music trips. North Allegheny sent the art orchestra to Nashville, Tennessee. And we sent the chorus to chorus and band, I think, to New York this month. So that was exciting. And then for the fall musical, it was announced that the twenty twenty four fall musical is going to be the Phantom of the Opera. Um all students are really excited and you can visit the social media pages to see what that's about. And also North Allegheny will be sending forty students this week to California for the international Dega competition. And we hope that we can bring some international prizes back for North Allegheny this week.
So as you all know, following my initiative with the town, we will be hosting a mock crash at Nash um Thursday, May ninth. Um I will follow up with formal invitations for you all and for administrators and all first responders with McCandless Township. Um additionally, National Honor Society um had their induction ceremony Thursday, April eighteenth, and we just wanted to congratulate. All the hardworking and dedicated students who got inducted into the National Honor Society. Thank you.
You know what time that's going to be that?
I believe so. I'm not certain on the time just yet. Um the last mock crash we hosted was in two thousand and nineteen and that was at eight thirty in the morning. And so I'd assume it should be somewhere around that time, eight thirty, nine o'clock. Um I will of course follow up.
The council's packet got notification that it's gonna be nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, okay.
Good.
Perfect. I will follow up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Great liaison reports. Mr. Arlo McCandless.
Industrial Development Authority, there was uh no meeting this last cycle.
Okay, thank you. North Hills Council Governments.
Nope, no meeting.
That was easy. Are there any public comments on administration or finance committee items at this time? Great, thank you very much. Turn it over to you, Doug.
That planning and zoning committee uh staff reports, RJ.
I I think we kind of stole my thunder earlier in the meeting. Because that was the one thing that we did at the planning commission this past month. Um yeah, should we do the prep for the pending ordinance resolution now or do you want me to wait to speak about that until we get to that on the agenda?
Let's wait till the agenda, I'd say.
Okay, well, um unless, does anyone have any questions for me about general planning stuff going on right now? They haven't given us any sort of construction schedule at this point. Approvals are good for five years, though.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks.
The liaison reports, uh we've covered that zoning hearing board, Trish.
Thank you. The most recently approved minutes are in your packet and there will be a meeting this Wednesday for the zoning hearing board.
Any public comments on planning zoning committee items? Report the the recreation committee.
Liaison reports, finance development and promotional committee for the Heritage and Cultural Center. Mr. Hart.
You'll find the um. In the second packet, you'll find the uh minutes for the uh. Finance and development and promotion committee for the Heritage Center in the packet. Just later.
Thank you. Activities Advisory Ad hoc Committee, Ms. Clinton.
No meeting.
Is there any public comment on recreation committee items? Hearing none, I'll turn it over to Brian.
Uh town manager's report was in your packets. Uh let me know if you have any questions. Uh one thing I think I I wanted to highlight, I put a picture in there of uh. The Ingmar Franklin Park uh Little League enjoying the use of Walpark uh where we recently. Uh with the help of the assistance of a grant, completed uh the renovations and particularly some drainage improvements to what used to be two fields that are now three fields at uh. Walpark and it looks like uh they 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 have some nice grass in fields. They look really sharp right now and I'm glad to see. The the children of our community enjoying it uh this past weekend. And also it wasn't in my report, uh but we've been talking about the Mif uh property, which is off of Highland Road. Which we've been talking about getting a donation for uh is a little bit more than ten acres. The town can control its green space uh that gives the town the ability to um. Control it at the end of the day and that that's a benefit to our community. And we're glad to have that opportunity at uh very little cost to the town to be able to own that property.
Uh the engineers report uh is in your packet. If there's any questions, Kelly is here this evening. If he has any questions for her.
Yeah, I do.
Kelly, if you could come on up, please.
What kind of grass did you use down?
At Walpark.
Blazer.
At Blazer. I believe it was what was originally specked after um discussion with Brian and Public Works. At Blazer. I believe it was what was originally specked after, um, discussion with Brian and Public Works. They wanted to go a route that they could maintain.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Kelly? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd also say endless cost of effect.
Yes.
Uh, the town's attorney report, I'll let Steve do his.
Yeah, mine was in the packet as well. Happy to answer any questions. And, um, we are having an executive session. Following the meeting this evening to discuss personnel issues. And if anybody has a question about my report, I'll be happily answering that. That's the end of my report.
Uh, there is no old business, uh, so we will move on to new business. Uh, we have a intern presentation from our social work. Welcome, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. On second line at this together.
Let me, you're gonna want to move that microphone down a bit, Charlie.
Please introduce yourself first for those who may not know.
Um, hello, everyone. My name is Sophia Hune. Um, I've been a social work intern here from Slippery Rock University. Since, um, end of August and I've been here till today. Um, tomorrow will be my last day for hours purposes. Um, I had to get five hundred hours total this year, um, but I will be back Monday to return my keys. Um, anyway. So, tonight, um, I was asked to give a presentation about summary of my, um, basically what I did here for the past nine months. Um, so that's what I'll be presenting to you today. So, um, just going over what I'll be talking about, my summary of the interactions I went through. Um, continuing education that I, uh, went through as well as my reflection, um, during my time here. And then if you have any feedback or questions for me. Um, so for my summary of interactions, um, I'll be sharing, um, what I did here for the past nine months. Um, as I mentioned, I do apologize. I don't have very like specific statistics or numbers. Um, I was not aware that I was supposed to be tracking this. So that's, that's my bad that I don't have that. However, um, so for the types of interactions that I did, um, the majority of it was connection to services. So that was getting clients, um, connected to community programs, uh, food assistance. There was a variety of things. Um, the town, you're great. You have a lot of options here. Um, the town, uh, residents are very fortunate. Um, so along with that, um, I did ride-alongers with multiple officers. Um, I had the privilege of being able to meet many of them, um, hear a little bit about their experience, um, as an officer. And I got to see how they do things. Um. In addition to that, I did some shadowing. I spent time at the Hampton Police Department, um, as well as North, um, Allegheny School District. And then lastly, I did a little bit of actual in-person meetups with clients, um, residents of your community. So this is just a breakdown, um, a little bit more specific. Um, as I mentioned, these are not like. Off of data of any kind. Um, however, I made my best estimate. Um, so. Most of it, the majority was connection to services. And then you can all see the percentages there of the rest of it. So this is in relation to the specific interactions, um, with residents. So most of it was with individuals. Um, there's also many families involved and then a few couples as well. So I met with a variety of local agencies, um, in McCandless. The first one being North Hills Community Outreach. They're a great resource here. Um, I was able to meet the director of their outreach services and, um, use many of their services to assist residents. Who were in need. Um, North Hills Community Outreach offers food assistance, um, car assistance, rental, um. Insurance assistance. Um, they're a really great resource to your community. Um, so as I mentioned, also Hampton Police Department, I shadowed with Angela Kenbach. She was originally, uh, the police social worker in the Allegheny County, um, that I believe she started in Hampton. She's been there three years. Um, she's, she's a great resource as well. And I was able to collaborate with her a few times to help residents in McCandless. Um, the third thing, uh, the biggest thing that I spent time with was at North Allegheny School District. I originally met with, uh, or at NAI with their school social worker as well as their staff coordinator, which is the student assistance program coordinator. That was Doug Brinkley. And then, um, I believe since the last week of January, I was shadowing. Jeff Longo, and he's at Nash, the senior high school. Um, and I collaborated with him and we worked together to put together a psychoeducational group. And I was able to implement that with a few students at the school. Um, it wasn't the turnout that we would have hoped for, but you can't force students to sign up for something. So. Um, we made the best of it that we could. And lastly, um, with UPMC, the Children's Advocacy Center, I was able to, uh, see the process of a forensic interview with Sergeant Igley. At the Children's Advocacy Center. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later on. So continuing education, I took advantage of my role as a student and a lot of things are offered free to me as that. So. Um, with that, this is not exactly in chronological order. Um, however, as I just mentioned, uh, UPMC, the Children's Advocacy Center. There was a training, um, that they did with the Millvale Police Department. And they went through basically what is a child's advocacy center, um, the MDT model, which is the multi-disciplinary team model. Um, as well as what is a forensic interview, um, things that are involved is that, is that, um, it's non-leading fact-finding. Um, type of interview, um, which is specific to interviewing children after they've been a victim of abuse. Um, so then Phoenix Training was actually, I would say is my favorite one that I went to. That was four hours that I went to, um. And that was with multiple police departments, uh, Millvale, Hampton, Ross, um, I was there representing McCandless. And a few hour, a few others from that area. And that was about understanding addiction, trauma, um, the treatment options with that. As well as the impact of stigma. Um, it was really impactful, uh, the, the guy who was running it, um, was a former addict himself. Um, also in the military for many years. Um, it was, it was a really great story to hear. Um. So next, uh, with the National Organization of Forensic Social Work, which I officially signed up for, um. They talked about, uh, what forensic social work is, how they are involved with the law, as well as, um, their work in police departments. And so it was really. Um, relevant for me since I'm, I was here, um, as well as what an expert witness testimony is. Um, which is maybe something that I will be able to do later in my career. And then, uh, with trauma-informed care, specific to suicide response, that was done, uh, by the University of Pittsburgh. And so they went over what is trauma, impact of trauma. I learned a new term, ambient trauma. Uh, the results of trauma as well as ACEs, which is the adverse childhood experiences. And that has been a. Really core study that I've learned throughout my education and, uh, and social work. And lastly, uh, the FBI came to North Allegheny for a human trafficking info session. It was aimed at parents, um, of the community and they had strictly put, um, to have no children there under the age of fourteen. They were, um, very blunt and honest with the reality of human trafficking and its prevalence in our community. Um, as well as just Pittsburgh in general. Unfortunately, we are a hub, if you didn't know, um, for human trafficking. Because of our, um, relation, uh, I guess geographically to, uh, Michigan, New York, Kentucky. Just unfortunately, we're in the middle of a lot of big areas. So as a, uh, my reflection for my time here, um, I am biased, of course. But I wanted to stress to you the importance of police social work that I feel, um, it has. I believe there is a lot of value in it. And I think not only you as a council, but, um, just really the general public. Uh, if you're willing to, you know, accept us, but also guide us in how we can help you and best be here as a resource for you. Um, I think that we can really help a lot of people. Um. For my perspective, um, I really was a privilege to be able to be here, um, and gain an officer's pers- perspective. And I hope that during my time here, I was able to give them a little bit of a social work perspective. Um, I know that their training is very specific of assessing situation. Is it safe? Um, for me personally, my training is, okay, what led up to this event? How did they, how did these people get here? Um, and then for advocacy, having this experience, I want to advocate for police officers. I feel they deserve it. Um, I think no one is a stranger to, I guess, the, the climate that it has been in recent years towards law enforcement. And I think it's really unfortunate. Um, and I think moving on in my career, I really want to bring. A positive attitude and advocacy for law enforcement. Um. So that kind of leads me into, um, my future career. Um, I hope to move into a forensic focus. I don't know what brought me to it, but I want to work in corrections, which is a little wild for me to say, but, um, and that way, uh. That will be on the other side of the law. In a way, I'll be interacting with the population that probably doesn't have the same attitude toward law enforcement as I do. However, um, I feel that, or at least I hope that my experience here will be able to, to add some. Um, value to what I can hopefully share with others. Um, and then a shout out, he knows I am mentioning him, um, Officer Sorillas, I wanted to. Just make it known that, um, ever since I got here, he was, uh, very welcoming to me, very friendly. Um, he was. I think he just, he went out of his way to support me. He always asked me, does, do I have any questions for him? Um, is there any questions that I had or, um. Really anything that he could be helpful to me. He was, he was there for me. So I just wanted to make it known that he, um, he, he was really great. And then lastly for awareness, um, although this is just one town's demographics. Um, I feel that I gained, um, a better awareness of the types of issues that are affecting communities, um, all around. And I'm, I'm really thankful for that and grateful that I got this experience. So, thank you all. Um, do you have any feedback or questions for me?
I mean, thank you so much. We appreciate all the.
Thank you.
I have no questions myself.
Ambient trauma?
Yes.
Yeah.
Other children in a family situation or?
Um, it definitely could be. So ambient trauma is basically like. What's left over. Um, and with leftover, I feel like that's not even fully encasing all what trauma really is. Um, there are short-term and long-term effects. I would say ambient trauma is more on the long-term side of things. Um, trauma has really deep effects on how your brain chemistry works. And it can be things that are unconscious, things you don't even realize you're doing. Um. I guess more so like repressing traumas, um, would be part of that as well. Um, you can literally block out years of your life and not even mean to do it, uh, because that's your brain's way of protecting itself. So. Yeah, that would be very much.
Sure, yeah. Good question. Um, I was happy to see you, you, you know, you're focused on making people connections, you know, using the resources we have here. I'm curious in your experience, um, those connections, were they, you know, suggested or initiated by our officers? Was that like a team effort to say whenever you went and met an individual, say, you know what, this person could use some help from this resource? How do you bring those things together?
Sure, yeah. There was definitely, um, a good amount of situations that the officers already, um, had information of the. Resources available in the community. I would say there were some cases where there was more specifics that I was able to help them with. Um, I think, like, just for example, food, um, assistance. That's a problem that is very prevalent pretty much everywhere. Um, and so with that, there's a few like big organizations, but there's smaller ones as well in the community that depending on, um. Like the criteria that they, uh, require for getting food assistance. I would say that's one example of something where I would come in so that the officer continued doing their job of investigating. And I can worry about getting them the resource that they need.
Right, thank you.
Sure.
There is one that's very broad.
Okay.
What surprised you most?
That's a good question. Um. I would say honestly that maybe it's just specific to this department, but all the officers that I interacted with were. Uh, very inviting, um, of the idea of social workers in here, um, which I guess would, I would say is surprising, not only because it's new. But because a lot of people, um, don't really know what social work is and they don't know the best way to, to use me as a resource. Um, but I would say like regardless of my engagement, they were. They were all very welcoming and they were curious. They were asking me questions as well, which made me feel, um, a lot more welcome here. So, yeah.
It's awesome to hear.
Hmm.
One other question, um, just curious in your experience coming into this field. Um, have you seen changes or trends happening like in, in communities like McCandless where? This is becoming more and more prevalent and becoming part of our town's budget in the future and things like that. Do you have evidence of that happening in other communities?
Um, so yeah, um, for example, Cranberry and Pine Township, I know that they, um, are starting their own social work programs. Hampton, for example, uh, they have Angela, um, as a full-time, um, they have a part-time and they now have an intern as well. I think in general, police social work is becoming, uh, more popular. Um, I think also like their people are seeing the value in it. Uh, police officers, their task was so much already. Um. Their responsibility is to be out there protecting the people of the community. If we can be there to help them. Um, not only like continue their investigation and sorts, but be able to make sure that no one gets kind of left behind. Um, is what I would say the goal is. And I'm thinking that more people are starting to see that we can be really helpful. If we're used in the right way.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you for your questions.
Are there any others? Were you involved in any, like, did you get to see any domestic situations? Where you felt maybe a little uncomfortable or threatened or dangerous?
Um, I, I was at a few, but I wouldn't say that I felt uncomfortable in any way. Um, whenever I went out, I did have the vest on with me. Um, and additionally, the officer went out before I got out of the car even. So, um, I personally felt like my safety was secure. I, I never really felt uncomfortable in that situation.
We felt like you could use your skills at a maximum level with our police help.
Yeah, I believe so. Um, they give me, or I mean, the officers, they gave me a lot of freedom, I would say. Um, they obviously had their own, um, opinion and their own, um. Insight into what they thought was best, but they said to me, you know, you're the expert here of social work, um. You know, let us know how we can help you and, um. You know, to continue what they can. So, yeah.
Did you have any interactions with borders? And if you did, how did that go?
Yes, um, that was, that's actually a very, um, prevalent problem. Um. I had, I had a few. Um, I remember I actually had, um, or I was speaking with, uh, code enforcement here. A little bit about boarding. Um, it's a, it's a very unfortunate issue because these people are alone. And they put a lot of value onto, um, things in their home. And, um. I mean, it's, it's a rough thing to, to try to help. Um. For me personally, I can offer ser- or I can offer services that could help with clean out. Or I could help with, uh, on a psychological end for them to go to, uh, a therapist. There are specific therapists that are for boarding. Um, however. In most cases, if people don't want to get that help, you can't force it on them. Um. Yes, it is, it is definitely an issue for sure.
Thank you.
No other questions? Well, thank you again very much.
Thank you.
Uh, continuing on to new business, um, we have.
A motion.
A motion. And I'll give this right over to you.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm watching the meeting there. Um, so last. The, uh. Resolution six is a motion, is a resolution to make a change to our zoning ordinance. To address, uh, adding tattoo parlors and the like to another district within the town. And by, basically we have to pass this resolution to, to make it pending. Um, so that we can hand it to the planning commission, so they can review it properly and send it back to us for, for approval. So this just. It's kind of a, and maybe I'll ask Steve to explain a little bit better why we're passing this and why it's kind of broad in the way it's written. Thank you.
Yeah, it, it's a process thing, but what it allows to have to occur is, is it's as if they're passing the ordinance. Officially tonight, it will go into effect. Um, if there are pending applications or future applications, we treat it as if it's in effect. Even before it goes to planning commission, it goes to Allegheny County, comes back to this council, whatever vote in the summer, I think is probably when that would be.
And, yeah, we, we have the public hearing. Set the second meeting in June.
June twenty-six is what it says here.
Cause we have the planning commission, thirty days after. This, you know, to have a round at it basically. So they'll get two meetings, it'll come back from the public hearing. It was advertised, we put it on at the second July meeting.
I think that's right. So, tha- that's the timeline here. Um, there is a pending application. At the zoning hearing board that we think this has come out of to address that issue. Um, a- as I think RJ has said, uh, several times, you know, when council adopted. The new zoning ordinance, there was always going to be scenarios that arise where. You say, oh, well, that doesn't make sense, or maybe it would make sense to do something different. It's a, it's a, uh, the ordinance that is always evolving. And, um, this. And um, this is part of that uh, evolution. So.
Let me get this.
Yes.
If we mail this and pass this tonight. It authorizes going to the planning commission, but it is though as we would have. It is treated as though we have passed the ordinance tonight, correct? Which means that. The pending request for a business, for the flats. Would be eligible to begin.
Correct. We, we discussed that we would issue a temporary.
Or conditional.
Going.
So conditional?
Yeah. Yeah, just a temporary uh, occupancy zoning permit. Um, and to ensure that it makes it through the process, council actually formally adopts it in July. And then they can get their full, but they can, with the temporary, they can, or conditional, they can open up their business.
In their business.
Yeah, it's the only difference between a temporary and a permanent is that you generally put an expiration date on the temporary. So.
Is that gonna happen in this case?
I, I mean, that I would assume, yes, unless there's any legal objection.
As long as you all vote to pass it and then the applicant before the zoning hearing board makes application for the temporary permit, which I don't see why.
Yeah.
Let's see if there's a motion out here.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, so there is a motion on the table. If you wanna go ahead and read it for us.
Yes, sir. Motion to adopt tentative identified resolution number six. Resolving that at a future meeting of the town council, the town council will hold a public hearing. On and after consider an amendment to the town zoning ordinance and to invoke the pending zoning ordinance doctrine.
So there's that connect. There's a motion in a second. Is there further discussion?
Yeah, I, I have a question. Um. So it seems, I don't know, I hate to cliche the cart before the horse, but um, I've. You know, I'm not against this ordinance as it is, but I'm not sure that a passing before a hearing. How is that doing what we're supposed to do for our residents by making this decision before there's a public hearing is my concern with this.
Well, we've done it before, if that helps. Um, it's not necessarily that a, a pending ordinance resolution is unusual. It's a tool that's available to council. You know, there are a bunch of different reasons that you could choose to do that. You know that maybe there is a concern that you hadn't thought of, but wanna react too quickly. Or you know, in this particular case, we have this application before the zoning hearing board. Um, that's a time-sensitive matter, you know. And i- and it seems as if we, we didn't have any objection, you know, show up at the zoning hearing board. And it seems as if council. You know, is kind of in agreement that, that this change makes sense. Um, but that said, you don't have to pass the amendment at the end of the day. Part of the pending ordinance resolution doctrine is that if something substantially is changed along the way during review. It no longer is in effect until, you know, it can go through the process. Now, I don't really anticipate that happening. Um, it's pretty straightforward. We just added it to the mixed-use districts basically, um, across the board instead of just like the more industrial one. Um, but.
That's why I asked about the, the timeframe because if something were to go hinky like this, we still have the ability to report back.
Yeah, right. Yeah, and, and, and that would probably be how you'd want to, well, we would want to issue any temporary occupancies that would come forth from this is. Yeah, yeah, that, that you, you always put an expiration on them. Usually you see temps when it comes to, you know, they're just finishing up. A seasonal item and construct like a sidewalk or something. And so you give them six months. In this case, we could certainly issue it through the end of. The period that we expect to adopt and you know, if we're still debating it, but it's not like it's a no, you can always issue an extension on that. Yeah. It's very open-ended.
The public will have full input and if council believes that the public is opposed, you don't have to move forward with it. The commission can recommend we don't adopt it.
But then that business has made a huge investment.
Yes.
Before that.
Right, but they understand that.
They know that.
And that it's only a temporary.
That's on.
Additionally, I understand your question because in this particular instance, this may be well and good, but we're gonna see this again. And I mean, it's not, you can apply the same thing a- across the board because you have different businesses, you have different. You have different circumstances. In this particular instance, you know, I, I'm okay with it right now, but. Maybe not every business is gonna meet this criteria.
Meaning for tat- tattoos or?
Who knows? I mean, there are different things that come up in, in you setting yourself last spring. With the new zoning, there have been things that come up from time to time.
Sure. Yeah, and I mean, you don't, this doesn't have to be the way that you do an ordinance amendment. The only recommendation in this case is because it's time-sensitive with this particular hearing.
But this is. Scenarios that would, we wouldn't have a pending ordinance uh, doctrine attached to.
Except we have a business that's waiting to open.
There was a, there's a externality here that uh, has, I, I think, uh, led you all to, to this.
Okay.
But again, this is an offensive, you know, if you talk about like football, offensive defense, this is an offensive use of the pending warning starter. There's also defensive ways where you may hear of something that is rumbling. You don't want that to occur. In a particular location, et cetera. This gives you the opportunity to go and say, we don't want this pending words. And that, as long as you do it before the application comes in, then it changes.
Any tool, any further discussion? Uh, there was a motion in a second. At this time, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item up, um, is uh, dealing with dog leash laws. Um, surprisingly enough, McCandless does not have any sort of dog leash law on record. Um, so this is a motion, um, giving authorization to our town manager to look into this further and help develop something of that matter. So.
Yeah, there is a, there's state law that um, exists, um, but it isn't specific to dog leashes. Um, so, and we have some other language that exists in our code, but we just wanted to update it to address that uh, dog leashes should be required in public space.
So is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Please.
A motion, emotion, make a motion to authorize the town manager to compose an ordinance to update and modernize. Article seven zero one point zero eight of the town code to include dog leash regulations within the town.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, kind of in the same realm here, uh, there's talk about uh, having our town manager. Look at a similar um, article about a do not knock list transient vendors. The town already has um, solicitations. But this goes a little bit one step for further, provides a little bit more um, services to our residents.
I'll make this motion, motion to authorize town manager to compose an ordinance to update article three oh five of the town. And to include a do not knock list for transient vendors.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion?
It's just kinda like a do not call list.
It is at a local level.
And I gotta tell you something right now, you know, I, I've gotten from my constituents. A lot of phone calls because you have people from roofing companies, paving companies, landscaping companies, they're locking doors all time of day and night.
It's definitely that season, so. Uh, there is a motion in a second. Uh, no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, at this time, we will call for any comment on non-agenda items. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Irene Caliendo, four one one Hot Drive. I just, on behalf of the Authority Board of Northland Library. I want to thank everyone on the council uh, for their great support of the gala. Recognizing that there were competing priorities uh, for um, the weekend. And so everything that you did. It was a great show, town council. I appreciate um, Councilman Giorgetti's kind words at the beginning. Um, we were proud of it and I think it was a good event and it only happens when people support things like that. So thank you.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
It's an easy event.
I can take no credit for it. It was a foundation event.
Any other public comment? Then at this time, we will join into executive session for personal matters. Thank you.